Good afternoon and welcome to the city council meeting for the City of International Falls for Monday, June 19, 2017. I would ask all to please arise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would ask the administrator to note the roll call with all members of the council present. We move to the agenda, and we have some additions and deletions from the agenda. First, on the additions, we have possible change to the city council meeting date for July, first meeting in July. Under deletions, we have items number three and four. Item number three will be going to Public Works. Item number four is not ready for the council at this time. Item number five, on the tax forfeit, the city administrator, can you comment with regard to deletion of that item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we're going to visit with the Public Works Committee to review each of the parcels that were included on a tax forfeit list that we received from the county, and we'll have the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee review that list and make a recommendation for consideration by the city council at the meeting on July 3 or July 5.
Thank you. Then item number nine, at this time, we're awaiting some additional information from the Kuching Economic Development Authority before need to take action there. And then addition, an item 14 and item 15 with regard to the audit that we had meeting with the auditors today. With that, your pleasure with the agenda and the additions and deletions.
So moved.
Motion by Councilor Jacksaw to adopt the agenda with the additions and deletions.
Second.
Second by Councilor Briggs. Discussion on the motion for the agenda. Question.
Aye.
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 A vote yes, motion is carried, agenda is approved with the additions and deletions. Thank you. Move to the minutes of the June 9th, June 5 meeting, yes, excuse me, June 5 meeting. Your pleasure with those minutes.
Hold on to minutes.
Motion by Councilor Briggs to approve the minutes, second by Councilor Pearson. Discussion on the motion or the minutes. Question.
Aye.
Aye.
A vote yes, motion is carried, minutes are approved as presented. Thank you. Move to the resolution on the payment of claims and transfers. And first, we have transfers to Fund Number 101, the general fund, from the Water and Sewer Fund, $18,285, to the Permanent Improvement Fund from the Water and Sewer Fund, $25,000, and to the Reserve for Capital Outlay from the Water and Sewer Fund, $17,428. And then accounts payable claims for the City of International Falls, $299,967.09, Airport Commission claims of $4,293.30, and Library Board claims of $10,541.70. Your pleasure with the resolution. Motion by Councilor Droba to adopt the resolution on the payment of claims and transfers. Second by Councilor Pearson. Discussion on the motion or the resolution. Question.
Aye.
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 A vote yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted, claims and transfers are approved. Thank you. Vote of the audience, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to approach the council on any item that's not, that they're not on the agenda for? If not, there'll be an opportunity at the end of the meeting for audience participation. We'll move to the public hearing portion of the meeting, and item number one is the second reading of the ordinance number 20 of the fifth series, an ordinance regulating the off-sale intoxicating liquor sales on Sunday, and amending Chapter 5, Liquor, Wine, and Beer Licensing and Regulation in the City Code of Ordinances. Council's pleasure with the approval of the second reading. Move. Motion by Councilor Briggs.
Second.
Second by Councilor Jacksaw. Discussion on the motion or the ordinance. Please.
I did want to point out, we had a conversation at the Legislation and Land Use Committee about the second reading, and in our most recent meeting with the city attorney and the two members present, there was a conversation about Section 5, which dealt with consumption in public places, and the committee was recommending that we delete that section that restricted consumption in public places unless there was other permits issued for it, and I just want to go on record indicating that the police chief and I share some reservations about the complete deletion of that particular section and are suggesting that that be reconsidered. And as I pointed out in my memorandum, the police department does have the authority to exercise some discretion depending on the situation that they're confronted with, with people drinking out, you know, in public places or next to the street, and I would just point out that they're obviously going to be using their discretion if you're having a beer with your neighbor and you're sitting out on the sidewalk, I don't know that you're going to be somebody that's going to be run into jail for that, but if we have cases where there's perhaps some public drunkenness or disorder, I think the police department needs some tools to be able to enforce any problems in behavior or unlawful behavior. If it's not in the ordinance, there's nothing we can do about it.
I had some reservations about that, so I'm glad you came back with that. I think we should reinstate that, especially with concealment.
Mr. Mayor.
City Attorney.
I guess the issue is, I mean, as stated, it's illegal to consume anywhere in public, any public street, any place, if you're not in the bar, and I don't think we want our officers to have discretion to either enforce an ordinance or not. I mean, either, either we're going to be a community where you can consume a beer and have a drink in public or not. It's got nothing to do with drunkenness or anything else. I mean, if somebody's drunk and disorderly, we already have laws on the books to do that, whether it's in a public place or in a bar or wherever. So, I mean, I don't think, you know, that's one of the problems we have now with some of our ordinances, is we've had ordinances on the books for years that we just never enforced. And, you know, I think the council, over the years, has kind of taken the position, well, if we're going to have an ordinance, we ought to enforce it. And what this ordinance says is you cannot consume, you can't have a beer in your hand in any public place, or a drink in your hand in any public place in the City of International Falls unless you have a permit. Well, you know, there's lots of public consumption that goes on, the vast majority of it is law-abiding, and, you know, we don't have, we don't have a law on the books now in International Falls that prohibits public consumption of alcohol. So this would be a drastic change from our past policy, and, you know, we're not just talking about Smoky Bear Park, we're talking about everybody. I mean, if this, this would make it illegal if somebody had a drink at the Elks Club, they had a beer, and they were going to walk down to the Viking, for them to carry that beer from the Elks Club to the Viking would be a crime. And if, and there's lots of cities that do that. I mean, I've been in cities where a friend of mine actually got a ticket for being out in public with a beer in his hand. And if that's what we want, then we should keep this in. But if that's not what we want, and we haven't had any prohibition against public consumption in the past, we have lots, you know, we've had plenty of prosecutions for disorderly conduct, or if somebody's drunk, you know, I mean, I think there are other laws that address that. The issue here is, can a person walk, you know, I mean, I don't, we want to, and chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think you want your officers knowing, you know, somebody's out there, they got a beer, but I'm not going to ticket them even if it's a violation of law. I mean, I, I would think if it's a violation, we want them all enforced. We don't want one person to get a ticket because he knew the officer or whatever, because the issue in the ordinance is, can you, can you have in your hand an alcoholic beverage? It has nothing to do with the conduct, just the fact of holding it would be illegal if we had this ordinance. That's going to be a drastic change to the kind of community we've had in the past, and you know, most of the problems that I've observed, as attorney and then as a city attorney the last seven years, is not with somebody that's consuming in public, it's after somebody's had too much to drink, and they're oftentimes, you know, in the parking lot, or even they get into a disorderly situation inside the bar, and the police get called. It's the, it's the conduct that is the problem, not whether or not they happen to be holding a drink in their hand. I've been the one recommended take this out from the beginning, because it is such a drastic change from what we currently have. But I, I would strongly urge not to leave it in and then say, we're going to let our officers determine who they ticket and who they don't ticket, because that'd be a nightmare for me in court to be prosecuting somebody, well, gee, you know, my neighbor last week, I didn't do anything to him, and now here I'm getting a ticket. So, I mean, I think it should be an all or nothing. Either we allow people to consume alcohol, it doesn't give them a right to be disorderly or drunk or anything else, it just gives them the right to have it in their hand.
Please.
Thank you. I have to disagree with the city attorney on that. I believe that this ordinance has been in effect for quite some time, the unlawful consuming of alcohol in public places. I don't believe you've probably seen a lot of citations for it, but it doesn't mean it doesn't get enforced. An ordinance like this is a tool for our officers on the street. A lot of times, when we come across a situation involving alcohol, and they have open containers of alcohol in public, we can put an end to it right there rather than letting it continue. I think that it just opens us up to more, probably more problems. I personally, as a citizen and a police chief, I don't want to see somebody walking down Main Street drinking a jug of whiskey.
I don't either.
You know, so that's how I look at that. As far as walking from one bar to the next, and consuming your beer or your alcohol lets you leave. They can't leave a, they can't take a alcohol from an on-sale establishment and carry it to another one. So, you can't do that anyway. I would strongly suggest I would keep that.
The only situation, and I agree, I don't want to see people walking down Main Street carrying a bottle of beer. I think it's disgusting. But what about the people at City Beach having a picnic and roasting hot dogs?
It would be illegal, I guess.
You sort of have.
Unless they're given a permit by the city. And I guess that would be the area I would like to just question the city attorney, if, how far does the, does the permit go? And I'm thinking of a couple of situations, the beer garden on July 3 and 4. How far may people range with a, with a beer? Secondly, last year, the all-class reunion was held on the corner of 3rd and 3rd. It was barricaded area, but there was a serving of alcohol there. How far could folks range there with a drink? And back to the 4th of July or the 3rd of July, in fact, at the last July 3rd, July 4th meeting we had here, there was discussion because citizens who do not like to drink beer venture down to the Viking Bar, come back carrying one or two drinks, and are consuming it in the beer garden. And so I wonder how the, do these situations play out?
I think it depends upon, you know, permit and the nature, and I think with, on the 4th of July, in the beer garden, I think there's been a designated area for drinking, right? I mean, you're, you actually, granting of the permit, you can set up whatever perimeter you want, and I would assume with the all-class reunion, if it was barricaded, the reasonable limitation of that would have been within the barricade.
So if someone left, leaves the beer garden with a beer in their hand, that would be virtually being out in the public then?
It would. Mr. Mayor.
Please.
My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, that as far as an on-sale establishment goes, we'll say the Vikings, since you brought that up, they're, the on-sale alcohol has to be consumed on the premises. They can't leave the bar without alcohol.
That's state law.
That's state law. So have we been lenient with that over the years? Yes, we have. Have we had a tool to deal with that if we needed to? Yes, we have. As far as the beer gardens and whatnot go, I would think that the permit holder would have some sort of an obligation to have a designated area where the alcohol is to stay. It shouldn't venture on the side of that area.
Any further questions or discussion?
Does state law cover us then, or not?
State law would cover us for taking on-sale liquor from a licensed establishment. There is, there are rules there, and I think that the answer to that would be the license holder, i.e. the bartender, the owner of the bar, whichever bar it is. It necessarily, it wouldn't cover the person carrying it on the street.
Just a follow-up question to Councilor Jacksaw's question. So you're saying if, we're using Viking as an example, and it's probably not right, but we are. So if the Viking Bar were to sell me a beer, and then I decide I'm going to walk over to Border Bar with that beer, they're liable for selling me on sale, and then they could get a ticket because I took it off their premises?
I believe that that would be a violation of the liquor laws. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, Steve.
I think you're correct.
We have been lenient over the years about that, and that's probably our fault, I guess. As far as picking and choosing who gets a citation, I don't know that we've ever written a citation for somebody consuming in public, but like I said before, we've certainly used that tool.
Have a first contact with somebody.
Absolutely, yeah. So it's been very helpful over the years, so. But like with any ordinance or any law, you look at a stack of ordinances, and you look at a stack of state laws, and traffic code, and everything in there, you can't enforce everything. I mean, that's where your officer discretion comes.
This is a fine kettle of worms here. We have the city attorney disagreeing with the chief of police. Now we got to make a decision. We got to come down to one side or the other.
I think the chief is correct about state law with regard to, that was a bad example that I gave, but, you know, an example right now that I don't think is, unless, you know, unless there's an ordinance, and certainly, so there could be, but for instance, if somebody right now went to City Beach and had a picnic, and they bring along a cooler, and it's got beer in it, or Mike's Hard Lemonade, or whatever it may be, you know, with this ordinance, that would be illegal. Same like, you know, we have these Wednesday night concerts, and people come down, and they bring chairs, and I'm assuming there's probably some people would bring a little cooler and have a beer or two while they're listening to those concerts. And with this ordinance, that would be illegal. And, I mean, it's a, I don't believe, and again, I haven't fully researched, but I don't believe it's currently against any state law to consume. I'm not aware that we currently have an ordinance, if we do, then I've overlooked it, that makes it illegal in International Falls to consume in public. The chief certainly is correct, that it would be illegal to buy a drink in one bar and then take that drink out, whether you go to another bar, or whether you just, you know, go to, and you hear people, you know, well, put in a plastic cup, I'm taking a roadie, you know. You know, all the time, and they'll walk out, and they'll be in the parking lot drinking or whatever.
This would pertain more to someone purchasing in the off-sale, purchasing alcohol of some type, and then consuming it in public.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, you clearly can buy it at an off-sale and take it to your car and go, but the question is, are we going to allow, as a City of International Falls, have a special law that prohibits any consumption of alcohol in public?
So the argument I hear is that this makes it inconsistent in court for you to represent, and then the argument I hear from you is that this helps prevent problems that may get out of hand.
You know, I think whatever, whatever the laws are, the chief's officers, you know, they're going to make the decisions, they're going to force it, they bring it to me, and I prosecute, whatever that law is. And if the law is, we're not going to allow consumption in public, then we don't allow consumption in public. But I, I believe, and, I mean, do you, have you looked, is there currently any prohibition in our existing liquor ordinance about consumption in public?
Well, I'm looking now, and I don't see it in the current ordinance, but I haven't looked at it in depth either. I think the important point that I was concerned about is that there is an exception in this language, it's not a blanket violation of the ordinance that you can't consume in public places, because there is the exception other than on the premises of an establishment license under this ordinance. So again, it says that, and we issue temporary licenses for beer and wine sales at the 4th of July parade, as well as the Bass Tournament and other events, and it's perfectly legal to do it there, and it wouldn't be a violation. But if I was to meet at my fence line, or out on the street corner with my neighbor, and I'm bringing a beer from my garage, and he brings one from his refrigerator in the house, and is that technically a violation of this ordinance? I think the answer to that is yes. What I'm saying, in the normal routine operations of a law enforcement officer or peace officer, if they see that, I don't find those two people being arrested for public consumption of a beer on the sidewalk in a conversation like that. It gives them another tool in the cases where we have exceptional intoxication or other kinds of public misbehavior, it gives them a tool to try and address that. It's not unlike, you can get pulled over for speeding going 42 into 35, but normally you wouldn't necessarily get a ticket, you might get a warning for that. Is it a violation of law? Absolutely, but the police, peace officers use a certain element of discretion when they deal with people, and so I would view this in somewhat the same way.
Councilor Droba.
So this, this falls under, one of the things that I've been concerned about the whole time I've been on city council, is we have a tendency of enforcing based on complaints. So if I see my next-door neighbor is out having a beer with his next-door neighbor, and they're sitting on the curb, just having a conversation about lawn mowing, you know, I don't like it, I call the police. Now are they going to get a ticket? I mean, that, that's the issue I have, is so much of our city comes down to enforcement by complaint, and I don't want to see this being in that position. Either, and I do agree with the city attorney, we either need to enforce it or we don't, and if it hasn't been much of a problem, I'm going to stand by the city attorney on this one for as much as I have all the respect for our, our police chief and his staff, but I just don't see us being able to enforce this when it comes down to a call by complaint. You know, and that, that's my concern.
Please, Councilor Briggs.
It's important for people to realize that we sat in committee and went through this, and through the old ordinance, the new ordinance, and really, Section 5, there wasn't anything in the other ordinance that spelled anything out there. So we, that's why we decided to take it out, is because we didn't feel there was any need to change anything going forward from the way we've done things in the past. The city attorney has brought up, there are other laws and other modes to deal with the problems, Harley's point. Two neighbors go in the backyard and have a couple of beers, got the music up loud. If we pass it with Section 5, they're in violation and making a public.
That's not a public place, private property. Yeah, but if they're in the alley, then it's.
The point being, we haven't had a problem in the past that wasn't able to be dealt with under the legal system, and that's what the city attorney told us in committee. And that's why we decided to take it out, because, hey, we haven't had a problem in the past. Why are we going to put something in an ordinance that could end up being a can of worms when we don't need to? If we have problems with drunkenness out in the public and everything else, I believe there's state laws, and they have means of disorderly conduct to deal with those.
So the Legislation and Land Use Committee has already?
Had multiple meetings and went through all of this.
Okay. My, my view then is, first of all, I don't think it's a good way to proceed in writing ordinances, that you carve out exceptions for your little pet, right? So if we were going to pass this, I would want to carve out an exception for picnics, right? Now you're into a slippery slope, and it gets to be a big mess. So I would side on this, because my instinct is to try to start carving exceptions, it gets messy. So my instinct, on top of that, since the Legislative and Land Use Committee has already thought this through, and we are a team here, and we rely on each other, I'm going to rely on the Legislative and Land Use Committee, who's already said that we should remove this. I did have reservations, because I did have images of people walking down the, swaggering down the street with a beer in their hand, but, so I will support keeping it out, in support of the Legislative and Land Use Committee, and because of my little pet thing that's with fear.
My understanding now is that Section 5 is not part of the ordinance. Was it in the model ordinance?
It was in the model.
And so you considered it as part of the model ordinance that's been.
That's why we took it out.
Put out by the League of Cities.
Because it was adding something to our ordinance that we never had before, so why do it? Why complicate it?
I respect your thoughts on that, as member of the committee.
Further questions or discussion then with regard to the second reading of the ordinance, which does not include Section 5, consumption in public places? The city administrator and the city police chief are advocating that we should include Further questions or discussion? Call the vote on the second reading of ordinance number 20 of the fifth series.
Aye.
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 Oh, no. There being four for the second reading and one against, the motion would carry, and the second reading will have passed. Go to item number 200, public hearing, and that's the second reading of contract ordinance number 963, to award the bid for the 15th Street Industrial Avenue to Highway 53, reconstruction by Bowman Asphalt Products, at a cost of $257,819. Your pleasure with the second reading of that ordinance, to award the bid.
I'll move on to awarding of the bid, second reading.
Motion by Councilor Droba. Councilor Briggs, questions or discussions with regard to the second reading of the ordinance to award the bid? Are you none, question?
Aye.
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 Vote yes.
Aye.
Well, yes, motion carried. And the second reading of the contract ordinance to award the bid is approved. Thank you. Move to the consent agenda. And we have the resolution for Public Employees Retirement Association declaring the part-time patrol officer, Brian D. Franco, be covered under the PERA. Your pleasure with the resolution.
I'll move on the consent agenda.
Motion by Counsel Drouba to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Counsel Pearson. Question?
Aye.
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 Well, yes, motion is carried and consent agenda is approved. Thank you. Move to the new business. And item number one under new business is to set the first council meeting in July to be at 4:30 PM on Wednesday, July the 5th, 2017, versus Monday, July the 3rd, due to the July 3rd and 4th holiday activities.
Aye, I move.
Counsel, motion by Counsel Jackson to approve the change. Second. Second by Counsel Pearson. Discussion.
I will be unable to attend on the, on the 5th.
Oh, okay.
That, that, that's fine. I'm, I'm one person. I'll be, I'll be 39 that day. My birthday's the 4th, so.
39 is a reason.
I'm not doing anything bad. I'm just, I'm really going out with family after and I'll be out of town. It's not anything bigger or big.
Yeah, right.
Well, is there, is there a...
Public drunkenness.
Yeah. Out of July 1st.
And I guess in discussing this with, with staff, the, we have the two-day celebration here, July 3rd and 4th. And the activities will begin in the park in the afternoon. If we would want to change the time on the 3rd, I think staff would like to be able to close the office at 5 o'clock rather than have it go on till 6:00 or 6:30 here. But if you want to move the time up on the 3rd, if that would be a better option, we could certainly do a...
It can go anyway.
2 o'clock or, I don't know what time, I don't know if you work that day, Brian, on the 3rd?
I work on the 5th.
Then it would be better for you.
Early on, on Monday would be the best.
Early on Monday would be very good.
Sure.
At work? I mean, what, what time on Monday would you want to have the meeting?
11:00.
11:00?
11:00 is fine with me.
11:00? Okay. All right. So we'll amend the, would there be a motion then to amend the, a motion to have it held on July 3rd at 11:00 AM?
Who made that motion?
You did.
Oh. All amended.
Amendment by...
On July 3rd, yeah.
Amendment by Counsel Jackson to amend the motion to...
It's going to happen to you someday.
To read at July 3rd at 11:00 AM. Second to the motion to amend.
Second.
Second by Counsel Briggs. Further discussion? Vote on the amendment?
Aye.
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 Well, yes, motion is carried, amendment is approved, and therefore is no need to vote on the main motion. Please.
Yeah. And the chief has called something to my attention. And so going back to the liquor license section that was passed, there is, it's not in Section 5 that has all the liquor laws in it that pertain to licensing. And so I, I think the way we passed it is fine. I don't think we need to have it there. But it, there is a prohibition against consumption in public places in Chapter 10. 10.53 talks about public property in streets, and 10.54 talks about consumption in private parking lots. And those are already on the books. We're not changing those. But when I ventured the opinion that it was currently legal to do that in public, I was wrong. Because we do have ordinances on the books. I've never seen a ticket written for a violation of it, but it's there. 10.53 is consumption of beer, wine, or liquor on streets and public property, and it prohibits it unless there's been a special permit granted. And then 10.54 does the same thing with regard to private parking lots. And so I think that replacing the liquor law section and taking that out is fine because we already have addressed that in a different ordinance. It's in Section 10 that is kind of the catch-all for all the various things that are appropriate or inappropriate to do as a citizen in.
This is why I get angry with the ordinances, because you have to have a computer with a word search function on it to find out what the law is. Are we, you know, we're doing that comprehensive land use plan with an ordinance review. Hopefully, we will clean this up. But I, I hate this kind of sloppiness.
But the chief called to my attention, so I credit him. And he didn't say anything earlier because it wasn't in Section 5, which we were replacing. And, but, but he is correct and I'm incorrect. Because I, I focused my attention on Section 5. I never looked at Section 10. And it didn't... But the restriction is there. Not often utilized, but, but maybe it is a very effective tool for the officers to diffuse if it gets out of hand.
That is in a different place because public protection, I mean, when you see shade tree being in there and blighting and so forth, you wouldn't think you'd find a, a section about consumption of beer and wine.
In my own defense, it's easy to miss.
Oh, let's leave it as it is for now, huh?
Yeah, I don't think we need it in our replacement ordinance. But contrary to some of the statements I've made previously in our committee meetings and also here at council meetings, it's not legal to consume in public unless there's been a special permit issued.
So I can't have a beer at a picnic?
Not unless there's a permit.
Well, I'll put my beer in a hot bottle.
And I think, you know, I think again, the officers...
Already going against the ordinances.
Unless there's an issue, I don't, that's not the kind of thing they're going to be out there looking for.
I never, I was making a joke, by the way. I don't drink beer.
Wine.
Thank you. Thank you, the attorney, for that.
Thank the chief. He's the one that brought it to my attention.
Any questions or further comments with regard to...
Just have one thing.
Yes, please.
Is, when we get the ordinance review, are we going to, is it going to be better organized?
Mr. Mayor, councilors, the ordinance review is going to relate to the land use regulations in Chapter 11 and the subdivision regulations, which I believe is Chapter 12. It will not address Chapter 10. However, as part of the property maintenance code and the rental licensing ordinance, there's sections of Chapters 4, 6, and 10 that will be reorganized into one chapter. So typically what, I think what you're concerned is, Counsel Jackson, is that cities would engage somebody to go through a recodification of the entire code of ordinances, which would address some of the inconsistencies between different chapters, as well as making sure that all sections of the city code are updated and current, with current state law, if that's been overlooked at some point in the past. So the review of the count plan and the land use regulations and the subdivision regulations will not deal with the public protection section of the ordinance. Can we talk further with that, with the legislation and land use committee about...
Codification, uniform codification. Okay.
Thank you. Move to item 2 under new business, and that's to consider a letter of support and certificate of support for the Bacchus Community Center's application with the United States Department of Agriculture Rural Development to rebuild the two steam boilers. Mr. Ward Merrill, please.
Mayor and councilors, I'll be brief here. We're, we're applying for a USDA rural development grant for $37,800. We're pretty sure we can get this grant. And it will rebuild the boiler refractories in both of the original boilers in the AB building. The boilers date back to 1912. I believe they came with a 150-year warranty, so we're still working on that. Not really, but we think we can get a lot of years out of them. And this will probably help us extend the life of the boilers, we figure, for another 30 years. We're in the final stages of this. We would appreciate a letter of support in this regard from the city council. We already have one from Kuchu Chin County, from Rainier, and from Little Fork. And we'd appreciate one from the Falls as well.
Questions for Mr. Merrill?
I give my effort and energy that goes into these grants and the hard work you do over there. You know, that's, it's a lot of work to do these grants. Anyway, I gladly support a letter for, on behalf of Bacchus.
Motion by Counsel Jackson to admit letters of support and certificates of support for the Bacchus Community Center's application with the United States Department of Agriculture.
I gladly second that.
Counsel Pearson gets that one. Discussion, questions?
Aye.
Discussion.
Question.
Question for discussion. I would certainly agree. I think in, and the federal grants are even more difficult than, than many nonprofit organizations. So I'm sure you're having your challenges here.
Well, we are. This is the first federal grant we've written, and it's, truthfully, it's less narrative writing than other ones are. But it's a heck of a lot of paperwork and forms and things to fill out. We're having a public hearing tomorrow at 5 o'clock and further compliance of the rules of this as well. So then we're having a special board meeting to adopt a resolution that goes along with the grant as well. So a lot of work. I guess the one thing I would quickly add here, the one place we've run into a bind with funding is the Small Cities Rural Development Grant, which we were, I think we submitted a letter back in 2014 that we'd be interested in some of that funding. Cootaska approached us middle of last month about following up on that. And we thought we had a good chance to get our remainder of funding from them through the Small Cities program. However, they just told me today, after their director checked on this, the community center isn't eligible for that funding. So we're looking for $13,000 elsewhere to finish off the project. I think we have $52,000 in hand. Pretty much right now, we need another 13. So that was a shock here at kind of the end of the process too, but...
Back there?
Yeah. But we'll, we're looking at about two or three other sources for that money.
Is it grants you're looking at?
Uh, it could be. But we need to, we'd like to get this done before we have to fire the boilers up again in the fall. So, yeah.
I would like to say, just in passing, we are, we have many nonprofit directors in the community who work diligently to win grants, to fund nonprofits in the community. And I don't know if anybody's ever done a analysis of what that means in revenues, if you combine them all together. But I imagine it's significant to our economy, the amount of money that you generate by writing grants as well as other directors. So, including the efforts at the city with the airport and everything. I mean, it all adds up, so.
Very good. Well, we're pleased to be able to support that. I will call the question on the, the motion to submit the letter of support.
Aye.
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 Well, yes. We will have those letters prepared for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you and good luck. Move to item 6 under new business, and that's to authorize the city administrator and consultants to develop a 2017 business subsidy policy to be used when considering tax abatement, tax increment financing, et cetera. Furthermore, to bring the city council a developers agreement for Granite Digital Realty Development Project. Pleasure with that, authorizing that.
I'll move.
Motion by Counsel Jackson?
I'll move. I think it's a very wise step. I'll make a motion to authorize it.
Second by Counsel Drouba. Want to make any statements, Joe, with regard to that?
I have nothing necessary.
Very good.
May I ask?
Please, yes.
I just see, why it went back open to bids, because I, I have been given some information about it, but I'd love to hear.
Yeah, sure. So we're at that very exciting part of the project where we're... And working with... Every dot I has dotted. And this is preparatory to our Series A project. Probably, which then, back into town for final design. In an attempt to get title insurance on the property, was that, under Minnesota's statute, county cannot simply convey ownership of property without advertising and proposals. County attorney, pardon me, not city attorney, county attorney and, and our team, details on that. And what happened last week was authorizing county attorney on just several little details that money for lately. But it is part of the process. We don't think it's going to slow us.
That's what I wanted to hear right there, that it didn't slow us down. Because...
Somebody would have to bid us significantly money-wise and have a plan to bring more jobs, more economic impact. So we're... A detail that was missed.
So this doesn't slow down your timeline and anything that's, that your process?
In fact, we're, we're... All of our projects, so we've actually accelerated our timeline from the parent company's perspective. All this flexibility, I'm, I'm going to close first if necessary.
Maybe just, once you, once you're through the process there and secure the property, then you'll be seeking the zoning change with the city.
Zoning, we've already submitted the application. Legal tells us zoning shouldn't be done if you're going to build it for investors. My question for the investor will be, is property zoned correctly? Hence the reason we have the outfit and been working with...
Kelly Myers.
On the timeline. I presume we're still on that speed.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
A further question. So you have an existing development agreement in place and signed and executed by Granite Digital as well as the county?
With...
You have a development agreement signed between both parties?
The company.
To purchase, to part, right.
And Granite Digital had executed the development.
Right, okay.
Yes.
So I think by virtue of that agreement, which includes, at least elements of it, include purchase of the, of the Armory property?
Correct.
So I believe that they have a property interest in it. So we, we are going to look at scheduling the public hearing to consider the rezoning application. If we didn't have that, then that would be problematic because you have to have a property interest. And I'm basing that based on past legal counsel opinions, not in International Falls, but in other places. So I think we're fine to move forward. That hearing's date has not been set yet, but will be.
But the planning commission will be asked to, to hear that?
Yeah, the planning commission has to send out a notice to everybody within, I believe it's, there's a certain number of feet within the property. There has to be a 10 days published notice in the official newspaper. They'll conduct a public hearing and then they'll make a recommendation to the city council to make the final decision as to whether or not the property is rezoned to that requested.
Very good. Counsel Drouba?
Oh, I, you just answered my question. I was going to ask what the timeline on the rezoning was.
Further discussion with regard to the business subsidy policy and the developers agreement?
Question?
Hi.
Hi.
And I'll vote yes. Motion is carried, and that is authorized. Thank you. Item number seven, it's a pleasure to appoint Ms. Joanne Dornhecker to the planning commission to fill the vacancy of Renee Sobolewski, who untimely passing, and the unexpired term would end on December 31st of 2019. Would ask your approval of the mayor's appointment. Motion by Counselor Briggs.
I'll second that gladly. Good choice.
Counselor Jackson. Discussion? Question?
Hi.
Hi.
I'll vote yes. Motion is carried. Approval is made of that appointment. Thank you, Joanne, for being here and for accepting that appointment. Item number eight, under New Business, is a resolution in support of the county seeking bonding funds in the 2018 legislative session for the restoration of the Grand Mound Building
I would move.
Motion by Counselor Jackson to approve. Adopt the resolution?
Adopt the resolution, yes.
Second the motion?
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs. Discussion. What we're doing is supporting the county, they're going to be making application, that application actually had to be in to the Minnesota Management and Budget last Friday, and we will be supporting that effort, so then those requests will go to the governor, and the governor will decide which projects that he is going to support. Then there's also a process for the House of Representatives and the Senate to have their bonding list, and so it's got a ways to go, but this is the first step, and we would be just supporting the county in that effort. Further discussion? Question?
Hi.
No.
Hi.
Hi.
I'll vote yes, there being four, four, and one against the motion to adopt the resolution. The motion is carried, and the resolution is adopted. Thank you. Move to item number 10, and that's a resolution approving the Minnesota Department of Transportation Routine Maintenance Agreement for fiscal year 2018 and 2019.
I'll move.
Motion by Counselor Drowba to adopt the resolution. Second by Counselor Briggs.
Hi.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion is carried, and resolution is adopted. Thank you. Item number 11, under New Business, is a resolution approving application for an exempt permit for the International Falls Elks Lodge Number 1599 to conduct a raffle on August 18th of 2017. Motion by Counselor Drowba to approve the, adopt the resolution. Second of the motion?
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs.
Hi.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion is carried. Resolution is adopted. Permit is approved. Thank you. Item number 12 is also a resolution approving an application for a one-to-four-day temporary on-sale liquor license for the Elks Lodge 1599 for August 18th for their annual corn and brat feed.
Move.
Motion by Counselor Briggs. Second by Counselor Drowba. Question?
Hi.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion is carried, and resolution is adopted. Thank you. Approving the temporary on-sale liquor license. Item number 13 is discussed supporting the Voyager Country ATV Trail Plan. It was in your packet, there was an article in the Minneapolis paper with regard to the extending trails, and the Voyager Country Club is working to move the trails from the Cook, Orr, and Crane Lake area with the goal of expanding it to International Falls, connecting to the Prospector Loop, and thought it might be worthwhile for us to send a letter of support. At the Koochichin Economic Development Authority meeting today, KITA has moved to send a letter of support. That was based on, from Peter Schultz of the Convention Visitor Bureau stating that it would be helpful to tourism to have that ATV trail extended. Your pleasure with that?
I would move on a letter of
Counselor Drowba to adopt the letter of support for the, with the Voyager Country ATV Trail Plan?
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs. Question? Question?
Hi.
No.
I'll vote yes, there being four, four, the motion, and one against. The motion to send a letter is approved. Thank you. Item number 14, under New Business, is to approve the audit of the financial statements for the year ended December 31st, 2016, as prepared by Schlenner, Wener, and Company, the city financial statements.
As the budget and finance chair, I would gladly move an audit.
Motion by Counselor Drowba to approve the audit. Second by Counselor Pearson. Discussion on the motion or the audit.
Audit this year, and there were
Administrator, do you have any comments with regard to the audit?
Well, I would agree with Counselor Drowba's comments. I think we got a very positive response. I think it worked very well. I want to compliment specifically Katie Hool and Betty Bergstrom for all the work that they've done in preparing our financials over the course of last year and this winter and spring, and we've worked with them very well, and I think that showed, and I believe the council heard that from our audit manager, that it was a very smooth audit this year and went very well, and they were very pleased with it. So at some point in the future, we'll need to reconsider whether we want to continue our professional relationship with them, or if we want to go out for bids for other audits, but I think it was a good experience, and we got a good audit report, and I commend our staff for working very closely with them and getting a good report.
Further discussion? Question?
Hi.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion is carried, and the audit is approved. Thank you. And item number 15 is to approve the submittal of the annual financial reporting form to the Office of the State Auditor, and to publish the same in the Journal, a summary of the financial statements for the year ended 2016. Motion by Counselor Drowba?
Second.
Second by Counselor Pearson. Discussion on the motion or the submitting that report to the state auditor and the publication of a summary in the Journal? Are you none? Question?
Hi.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion is carried. It will be done, and the summary of the finances in the, will be published in the Journal. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Just occurred to me, and I've brought this up before, but it would, it isn't on the agenda, but as an addendum to this, is it possible to put that financial report on our website? I mean, it is possible. And, you know, transparency in government. People then are free to peruse that financial statement. It will.
So you're thinking the entire packet, or you're thinking about the summary that's going to be prepared?
Yeah, the entire packet. That's what other cities do.
I think it's interesting that the auditors point out that it's for the members of governance and the council, and it's not public information. I don't know why they do that, because it is a public document, but it's in there all the time, so, it's for our sole use, but if that's something the council wants to do, we can post it to the website. I don't know how many people typically would review that as a matter of routine, but it's council's discretion.
I've gone to other websites and read the financial statements of other cities, so it does happen. But I think that, I think you can access those through the state auditor's office anyway, so I don't think we're breaking any public trust to put public business on the website.
See, there's a specific form that the county auditor's office gets from us, and that's what you just approved submitting to them, and it's due by June 30th of each year, so that would be the document that they would provide. It's a summary form, and it's actually been prepared by our auditor, so I don't know that would be the complete information that you reviewed at your budget and finance committee meeting today.
The departmental, we had more detail in the full packet, breaking it down, yeah, and that's what I was hoping that we could deliver. I mean, I'm asking. I'm going to make a motion to that effect, if I may.
Do you accept your motion to have, and do you want to state that?
Okay, that PDF file be placed on the website for our constituents to be able to access, that is the complete, not the report of governance, though, but it would be the financial statements with the notes to the financial statements. We were discussing at budget about transparency and informing the public, so this would be a part of that if our spirit to move forward with that is.
Accept your motion. Is there a second of the motion to have that PDF published on the city's website that would have the audit with the finances and notes?
Second.
Second by Counselor Pearson.
I'm not against the idea. We have nothing in here to hide, and nor have we ever. I have nothing against that. I just, I think the summary is, is this something, if someone were to come into the office and say, "I'd like a copy of last year's budget," would we give them this audit? I mean, I'm just wondering, is this different than what, I don't know, I've never talked to the league of Minnesota cities to see how other cities handle this. I just, it's not that exciting of a read, and I don't have an issue with putting it on the website, but with that being said, is this somewhat out of the ordinary?
No, I don't think it's out of the ordinary.
Do you have to upload it?
No, the only question I have, and I don't know the answer to it, is that we have a certain amount of data or information that we can put on our website, and just based on the size of this, I don't know if that limits us in any way, but I'd have to check with my staff, so I don't know the answer to it.
Well, let me change my motion then. Contingent upon any limitations of data available, I don't want to, I don't intend to hamper anybody else's use of the, any other staff person's use of the website by doing this. So if that's the case, then I'll make my motion contingent upon that space being available and without hampering others, hampering staff use of the website.
Could result in additional cost, if I understand the city administrator, because of the size of the, or the volume of the information?
I don't know if it's an extra cost, it's just we have a maximum amount of data on there, and so if we use some of that, a portion of that up for this, and there's other things that we can't, we can't go back as far with our videos of council meetings, for instance, and minutes and that other information, because I believe there's limited
How close are we?
I don't, I don't have that information. I can, you know, I can look it up and let you know at the next council meeting.
I made a contingent, so we can revisit this if there is a problem.
Okay, so the motion now is to put a PDF, the audit with finances and notes, contingent on hampering the, by the use of staff?
And extra cost, I should add.
And extra cost, okay. Any further questions or discussion? Question?
Hi.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion is carried. And we'll have the, attempt to have the finances and notes on the website. Thank you. Further, under New Business? That would go to reports of boards, committees, and department heads. City administrator.
Mr. Mayor, council, I just wanted to update you regarding, we are going to move forward this summer and do testing of the water quality at City Beach, and we're going to do that in partnership with Koochichin County and the town of Fort Francis and the city of Rainier. So the city of International Falls and the city of Rainier have set up accounts with Pace Labs in Virginia, and the public health department over Koochichin County is going to test City Beach and Rainier Beach on June 28th, July 26th, and August 30th, and then have those tested for E. coli to make sure that the water quality is sufficient for being able to swim in it. And what we're doing in partnership with Fort Francis is they're doing it three times this summer as well, and we've kind of offset it, so Fort Francis will be testing at their beach on June 5th, July 10th, and August 8th. So we're really basically testing this part of the lake twice a month, so we're hoping that we won't have any incidents or issues, but it's just to try and promote public health. So we're working in partnership with all of them, and we're moving forward with that. I don't have a report, but I have a question, and I'm just curious as to where the Recreation Commission might be with moving forward with our joint powers agreement for them and the school district moving into next year, and then also the budget that's typically, that would be effective on July 1st. I haven't seen that sort from the city, so if anybody from that commission could update, I'd like to be able to get that.
I believe the budget's been adopted, so it should be forthcoming. There's no reason that it shouldn't be. As far as the joint powers agreement, I, that has not been before the commission, and the commission meeting is scheduled now, I believe, for June 28th. About to contact Director Bill Mason and get a copy of that budget, and then see that joint powers agreement is on the agenda for the meeting on the 28th. Thank you. Thank you for the good work on the water testing in the beach. City attorney?
Mr. Mayor, working with Kelly to try to clean up several of these blight situations and progress on those. That's all I have to report.
Great, thank you. Chief Maston?
I don't know, sure.
Thank you. Betty, did you have anything to, for the council? Great, thank you. Very well stated. Move to reports to the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. Hear about Saturday?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank council for supporting the effort. I think it was well received, and thanks for your vision and support, and we couldn't have done it without council approval, and that was so important. One of the main councilors was there, Brian, was there on Saturday. He helped. Without him, we wouldn't have been able to get rid of the brush we collected. Two trailer fulls, or three?
Three.
Three trailer fulls. Of course, it was right after a storm again. Last year, it was right after a storm, so we can time this right. We filled an entire garbage truck, and we had a trailer full of white goods and a trailer full of demolition.
Trailer full.
Trailer full of, yeah, yeah. And it was heartening to see that, you know, there's certain needs that we have in our community. community in some neighborhoods than others, right? And so there was one particular instance I know where a fellow came back, he was living in a neighborhood where it isn't as affluent as some other neighborhoods and he was, he was helping his neighbors. He kept bringing stuff in, so it was exactly what we wanted to see. On our pickups, um, we did deal with many elderly citizens, which again is our, it's a great target to help people that can't move stuff, so, uh, I, I just want, and there are some tw- there's some tweaking we're going to have to do and I won't bore everybody with the details. We'll talk about that some other time. I just want to do some thank yous. Uh, first of all, Dwayne is here. KGHS did some public service announcements. They were, I think that really helped because outside of the flyer, we really did have a great turnout. Um, and the journal, Rob Davenport, helped, had, held my hand on getting that flyer out, so that was helpful. And, uh, as far as, um, volunteers, Brian Briggs, Levi Pearson, Brian Nelson, they were some of the individuals that donated time and equipment and gas. Wayne, we couldn't do it without the county's cooperation. Wayne Fuller was key in this and of course, our, uh, Business of the Year, Wade Friend and his company, they were there with their staff, they donated their equipment and time. And then we had, um, and now I'm going to get into the city. Emma Rudd was essential. She took the phone calls and I heard from Betty, that got a little intense at times, so we're going to have to look at that again. But Emma was key and the city crew couldn't have done it without them. They did the pickup of the white goods, uh, for those people who called in. As far as our committee goes, uh, Larry Davison and Joe Schwartz were there and working hard and I want to give a special thanks to Larry because he went back on Saturday afternoon after we were done and finished the pickups and Monday and I got to ask him to go again tomorrow, so he's just been going way in above, beyond even what you would request of a volunteer, so Larry Davison, thank you. And then, um, organizations that participated, Ward Merrill was there from Voyage Forward, uh, Servants of Shelter, Cynthia Warren and Ariana Daniels were there. And, um, from the high school, we had Cape, the best Lutinsky. There were four students and Rachel Almdahl had four members of the student council. Talked to some of the gals, I interviewed them and they were on the pickup, right? They, they got in the trucks and went house to house. We had 40 on our pickup list and that's a lot because some people wanted their garage emptied, right? So what happened is, is that, you know, we had these young gals moving stuff. I asked one of them, it was Grace Bowles, I said, "So how was it?" And she said, "It was hard," you know? So they really were troopers. And then, so I think I thanked everybody. I hope I haven't overlooked anybody, but thank you to the council and it's well received. And what I would like to say is that it's nice to offer a benefit for the people who live in the city, especially for city residents, exclusive to city residents. Once in a while, it's nice to say, "You belong to the city, you're part of the city family and you get special." Right?
Very successful. Thank you for your leadership and, uh, good work there.
Thank you.
Further on, uh, committees?
I, uh, I was not able to attend this weekend. I went down to the League of Minnesota Cities, uh, um, state conference down in Rochester and, uh, really good information. I actually have a lot of pa- uh, packets, I just haven't copied them for you guys, but...
Good, thanks.
One of the things that I, I brought up earlier is some more transparency in government, getting out into the community and bringing some of our city council to the, to the people rather than having them come into city hall. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna have some more discussions about that at the council level, but all in all, it was a very good, uh, um, very good conference and, uh, Joe Emerson from White Bear Lake was elected president of the League of Minnesota Cities.
Thank you. Further reports? I would just, uh, submit my written report to the council. I did meet with Mayor Avis in Fort Francis last week, had some good discussions with regard to a number of issues there. Um, I'd also like to bring to your attention that, um, the city's, uh, engineering firm, consulting engineering firm, Woods, Smith and Olting, will be making a presentation to the city council as a whole on Wednesday, July the 12th at 1:30 PM here in the council chambers. And that will be, uh, a report on, uh, the condition of streets and avenues, um, how extensive the needs for street repairs are. So, um, that's certainly one of the reports that the public works committee is, uh, is looking forward to as well as, um, the work that's being done to, uh, measure the inflow and infiltration of our, in our sewer system. So, um, a couple of, uh, heavy items for consideration by the council. So if you can make that meeting on July the 12th at 1:30, it would be appreciated. Further, under committees? Anyone in the audience that has something to bring the attention of the council? Not, note the correspondence and, uh, our meeting now will be on, the next meeting of the reg- regular city council meeting will be July the 3rd at 11 AM here in the council chambers. For further business, declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.